Good evening and welcome to the January 23rd, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and like to speak to council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council. We have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you'll have, you'll see a green light. After two minutes, yellow light. And after three minutes, a red light will appear. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The City Code identifies the procedure of participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. Copies of the ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Riley Holliday with Man of Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Ely will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand through the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to pray publicly with our city. Let's pray together. Holy Spirit, we love you, and it's with glad hearts that we get to welcome your presence here this evening as we gather to continue to lead Newport News. I think of how your word reminds us that we can call upon your name, that you're wonderful, you're a counselor, you're the mighty God, you're the everlasting Father, you're the Prince of peace. And we know this because the government rests upon your shoulders. And I just want to speak that over our council today, God. We are truly blessed that you chose these leaders for such a time as this, that it really is on purpose for a purpose. And may it just no rest. The beginning of the year can be full of hustle and new initiatives and new programs, and I just pray that there's a sweet spot of rest for, for each individual, for their families, their marriages, just blessing and favor as they continue to shepherd and lead the city of Newport News. We love you, and we thank you for them in your mighty name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Presentation. Tonight, we have a presentation recognizing two organizations for their achievements in the Adopt a Spot program. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Frank James, Dr. Public Works, to join me at the podium. On behalf of the citizens of Newport News, City Council, and myself, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for the dedicated service you have been providing to the city as a member of the Adopt a Spot program. The Adopt a Spot program was formed to encourage participation in litter cleanup of designated areas in their community at regular intervals. Individuals, organization, or businesses commit to keep a designated area, other than a highway, cleared of litter for two years. In exchange, program participants are provided materials to help them with the cleanup and a sign bearing their name to be posted in the area. Participants are required to complete four cleanups per year. Our city would not be all that it is without the dedicated and selfless service provided by those citizens who devote their time, energy, skill, and ability without anything approaching adequate compensation. On behalf of a grateful community, I would like to recognize two groups that have far exceeded the four required cleanups during the last fiscal year. I ask that the following groups come up to be recognized individually. First, we're going to have the Rotary Club of Warwick at City Center. Please come up. And in no way is Councilman Long picking this award, okay? Yeah, of course.
Congratulations.
All right, I think we have a plaque, a plaque for you. Sign proclamation, and then we'll do pictures. Come on. Good. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And next up, we have the Newport News Police Department for completing seventeen cleanups. Public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. We will now move to the consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page three, minutes of the work session of January 9th, 2024. Page 27, minutes of the regular meeting, January 9th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item F1 and F2, all-inclusive.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you. Other City Council actions, next on our agenda. Page 56, Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute and the city clerk to attest a memorandum of understanding by and among the city, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the Commonwealth of Virginia, Department of Veterans and Defense Affairs, supporting encroachment mitigation at Joint Base Langley-Houstis. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you. Page 63, Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $700,000 from the Commonwealth of Virginia, Department of Veterans and Defense Affairs, to support encroachment mitigation at Joint Base Langley-Houstis. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Page 66, Item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to adopt a resolution of the Council of the City of Newport News, Virginia, establishing a policy for remote participation in City Council meetings through electronic communication means. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers? Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Against.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carried, six-one.
Thank you.
Could I just say, I didn't consider this, but I feel that if we are elected officials, that we should be in person for meetings unless there is some drastic reason why we can't be there, illness of that kind. So that is why I did not support it.
Thank you. Page 70, Item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to approve a resolution to comply with the budget public hearing notice provisions of Chapter 25 of Title 15.2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, entitled Budgets, Audits, and Reports. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. There are no appropriations this evening. We will now move to citizen comments. Uganda Sample Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here. My name is Uganda Sample Jones, and I'm here with a few friends, and I am honored to stand before you as a proud resident of the Eastland Community and the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. I would like to address a matter of great concern that affects our community, the issue of coal dust from Dominion Terminal Associates. While recognizing the significance of the terminal as a self-proclaimed world-class coal shipping and storage facility, it is crucial that we address the environmental impact on our neighborhoods. Our community is undergoing transformation, well, transformative changes with new developments such as the preschool on 16th and Jefferson, new homes for the Choice Neighborhood Initiative in a brand-new seafood market overlooking our beautiful waterfront. However, the presence of the coal dust settling on these promising projects is a cause for concern. I urge our council to consider the responsibility of Dominion Terminal Associates in protecting our air from the particles emitted by their operations. As we strive for progress and a better quality of life, it is essential that we also prioritize the well-being of our residents. I strongly recommend that our council encourages Dominion Terminal Associates to explore and implement effective measures such as a wind fence or domes to mitigate the spread of the coal dust. This proactive approach aligns with our shared commitment to a cleaner and healthier environment for all. I would like to thank you, Mayor Jones, and also Councilman Ely, for your engagement in really starting the narrative of what we can do and your work to bring funding. Thank you for your time, your attention to this matter, and I trust that together we can work towards a solution that benefits both our community and the responsible industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Jones. Good evening, Council. Here as a concerned member of the Hampton Roads region, as a father, as a community member, as a community advocate, so often we want the best for our families, we want the best for our communities, we want the best for the people of this great area, Hampton Roads. And we know that, especially for my kids, I want them to have great careers. I want them to have the options to join the workforce, and it'd be great to have the options of the family to be able to take advantage of the great things that are in this region. But a lot of times, we don't realize that we see wealth as wealth, but we don't see wealth as health, and health is wealth. So I would really like to continue what was said about coal dust in the area and really would push us to take advantage of this opportunity to really take environmental justice very seriously for the legacy of our future, for our families, for our kids. They can't really enjoy the legacies that we're trying to build for them, the sacrifices that we're trying to make for them, or all the different things that we are trying to do for them if they don't have quality of life, they don't have air quality. If you have health conditions or health matters that impact them, they really can't take advantage of all the things that we're doing for them, whether we're pouring it to the schools, the communities, the parks, the workforce, whatever we're trying to do, health is wealth. So I would really ask you all to really take this seriously. A lot of times, in the past fifteen, twenty years, everyone's been talking about coal dust in different communities, and they're trying to make an impact. Now is the time, 2024 is the time. We have a great group of people up here, you all are doing incredible work, and I'm just asking you all to continue that incredible work by fixing the environmental issues in our area and tackling the coal dust. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll take a moment before we call the next speaker, just to skip ahead some of my comments. I'll take mayor privilege. So when it comes to environmental justice, so what we are currently doing is, in office or in tandem with the city manager, there's been $2 billion allocated at the federal level for environmental justice, right? So I know Uganda and I have talked frequently about this, right? I view my role as mayor with Allen as to go to DC and get this federal funding, okay? So we have meetings scheduled with the EPA to see how we can best access this $2 billion, which has already been set aside for environmental justice. I would imagine that some part of that money is going to be toward monitoring, something could be toward cleanup. It's a lot of money, the country's also very big, but we have already been working on this. It's a, it's a multi-year sort of issue, but right now, the thing that we can do with a private company is to make sure that we can access federal dollars, that's $2 billion in the environmental justice category. Missing anything, Allen?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're good. Next up will be Adam Marrow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the City Council, people of Newport News. I'm Adam Marrow, 800 Lombardi Avenue, apartment 8417, Newport News, Virginia. First of all, I want to say thank you to you guys. I came up here last time, had a complaint about the website regarding the shelters and food banks it listed, and I was expecting I'd have to come up here again and again and maybe a couple other times before it got fixed, but no, you guys were fast, like. So I want to say thank you for that, I really appreciate it. But there's one issue I've noticed that people have been coming up here again and again asking for a resolution to support a ceasefire in Gaza and, and asking for international humanitarian, humanitarian aid. And I'm hoping this time you'll be as fast as responding to that concern as you were responding to mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Wright.
I live at mine, 942 Shore Drive, Newport News, Virginia. Mayor Jones, esteemed City Council members. Without the CNO rail line and the coal it brought to our area for export, the development of what we now call Newport News certainly would have been much different. Colius P. Huntington visited Hampton Roads as a young man and marveled at the many advantages of the harbor. Years later, as a wealthy industrialist and railway magnate, he set his sights on building a railway for the coal mines from, to, for the coal mines of Ohio to Hampton Roads. When the CNO rail length was complete, Huntington proceeded to further develop Newport News by creating neighborhoods with the Old Dominion Land Company, building the Hotel Warwick, and launching Newport News Shipbuilding and Dry Dock Company. The world from much of the late and early to mid 20th century ran on coal. Coal was king. In my career as a mariner, I sailed on ships that delivered hundreds of thousands of tons of coal from Hampton Roads across the sea to the Netherlands, to Denmark, and to Egypt. That was then, this is now. The reality is coal is a toxic and polluting 19th-century energy source that needs to be phased out, should have been phased out around the time World War II ended. Today, when you hear proponents of the continued use of coal as a fuel source, they invariably are motivated by financial interest and will extol the virtues of clean coal. Clean coal is a farcical myth, a fantasy. From the time coal leaves the mine to, on a coal car, it spews a blanket of pollution and environmental degradation, fouling the railways right of ways, the landscape and the waterways that it passes. When burned as a power source, it spews an noxious maniasm of harmful particulate matter and carcinogens that goes wherever the wind goes. Anyone who lives in the southeast community of Newport News is familiar with the particulate matter that flies off the huge coal piles next to the 664 interstate flyways, soiling homes, leaving a black coating on window sills and ledges. Citizens should go to the beaches at King Lincoln Park or Anderson Park and see for themselves the strata of black coal dust on those beaches. Residents of the southeast community worry about the health effects on themselves, their children, and the elderly. Citizens of the southeast community cannot help but believe that the coal piles are a decisive contributing factor to the high rate of asthma in children, reported to be twice as high as other areas of the city. Positive action to protect the health of our citizens and the environment needs to be taken today. Although coal played a large part in promoting the prosperity in the early days of our city, its liabilities demanded to be replaced with clean, carbon-free energy sources. King Coal must be reined in and ultimately disposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen, Carmen Johnson Martelli.
Hi, my name is Dr. Carmen Johnson. I try to speak slow. I speak very fast. Thank you for having me tonight. I am the president and founder of Love the Tree of Life Clinic, coming very soon, non-profit clinic. It's on 2016 25th Street, and our target population is going to be the homeless, the underserved, and the marginalized. Now, we're currently almost passed all our inspections to code in compliance, which has been leaps and jumps and very expensive, to say the least. We purchased that building in December in 2022, and it's been a long year. We've exhausted all our resources, personal, 401K, savings, paycheck to paycheck. At this point, we've, we've applied for two grants, the Community Support Grant in October, and we recently applied for the Community Block Grant this January. There haven't been any responses yet, though they will respond to us either in March or July of this year. I guess it's a very cumbersome process, which we totally understand. We have reached out to quite a few people in the community. We've been totally funding ourselves, and we're kind of dry at this moment, keeping the building afloat, malpractice insurance. The tradesmen are all commercial tradesmen, so they're charging us an arm in the leg. And then ADA compliance is a whole nother issue. So we spoke to a couple people today, and they said we should ask. We are approximately $20,000 short in order to open. We have two inspections left, and we want to serve. We want to definitely help the other nonprofits in the community. We will be providing basic primary care, basic dental, basic mental health, some showers, some clothes, kind of like Four Oaks, and we are actually partnering with Four Oaks as well to kind of help the services and the high-risk patients that they have identified. I'll be going out on Thursday to do the homeless count, to identify our patients and to help those at greatest risk, but we'd like to be open. It's kind of been dragging out, and yeah, that's it pretty much. So we're just kind of peeling, trying to see if there's anything available in the city resource, as we have not tapped in yet. It's all been privately funded.
Thank you. Freega Aza.
Freega Aza, good evening. I would like to start off with a message from Mayor Jones' official Twitter account from October 10th. Quote, "Newport News City Hall will be lit blue and white all week in support of Israel." There is also information about a rally for Israel, and "our community will come together in solidarity with our friends and family in Israel," end quote. Since Mayor Jones, on behalf of the city that you all represent, has taken a public stance in support of Israel, I now ask you all, do you support Israel when they have murdered 25,000 Palestinians, including 10,000 children? Do you support Israel when they are indiscriminately bombing Gaza in order to defend itself? Do you support Israel when they are cutting off access to food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to 2.3 million Palestinians? Do you support Israel when they are bombing hospitals, schools, universities, churches, and mosques? Do you support Israel when they're, when they have left none of the 36 hospitals fully functioning? Do you support Israel when they have displaced 85% of Gazans from their homes? Do you support Israel when they are desecrating 16 cemeteries as reported by CNN, leaving gravestones ruined, soil overturned, and bodies unearthed?" gravestones ruined, soil overturned, and bodies unearthed? This is a war crime. Our dead cannot even rest in peace. Do you support Israel when they are using white phosphorus indiscriminately? Do you support Israel for its collective punishment, a war crime prohibited by common Article III of the Geneva Conventions? And lastly, I ask you all, will you still support Israel if they are found guilty at the International Court of Justice alleging that Israel is committing genocide and manifest violation of the Genocide Convention? If you answered yes to any of these questions, I am disappointed in you as humans and elected leaders. You have failed your civil duty to represent the people. Your solidarity was never about humanity then. Instead, it was about your personal motives, for what purpose I'm not sure, perhaps AIPAC funding. Councilman Woodbury, at last city council mentioned, as politicians, it is important you represent every side of the situation. You represent your community, and you remain unprejudiced. I am disappointed that the city of Newport News did not abide by her powerful words and misrepresented the community. As a city that interjected their views on an international conflict to openly show support for Israel, you stand with genocide, ethnic cleansing, and support of war crimes. Until the city of Newport News retracts its statements, condemns the above war crimes, and passes a ceasefire resolution, you all, as representatives, are complicit in this genocide. After 108 days and 25,000 Palestinians killed, the city of Newport News still stands on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Creasy.
Hello, my name is Ann Creasy. I am from Norfolk, where I've lived and worked for among coal dust from Norfolk Southern trains transporting and dumping onto ships in the Elizabeth River over in Lambert's Point in Norfolk. I am here in solidarity with Newport News residents, having taught to many over the years, having listened to their testimony of the impacts of coal dust on their health and their homes, and their concerns for their children, and local schools that often have higher rates of asthma. As you know, as others have stated, many of these pollutants are made of tiny particles so small they can pass through the lungs and into the bloodstream. Tests show that coal dust contains arsenic, lead, mercury, chromium, nickel, selenium, and other toxic heavy metals. Exposure to coal dust is linked to decreased lung capacity, increased childhood bronchitis, asthma, pneumonia, emphysema, and heart disease. Areas with high levels of coal dust pollution have increased infant mortality rates and decreased life expectancies. I am commenting to urge Newport News City Council to pursue any available pathways to address coal dust in Hampton Roads, and I appreciate the mayor's mention of pursuit of environmental justice funding at the federal level. I would also like to share, I work for the Sierra Club, and the Sierra Club and many other organizations submitted a petition for rulemaking to the EPA with the support of our legal team to have them look at unregulated discharge from open-top rail cars. I know Newport News has the larger piles, but in Hampton Roads and in Virginia in general, even with CSX up in Richmond, they're transporting coal in these larger, open-top rail cars, which are depositing coal into waterways, which is out of compliance with the Clean Water Act. So I'm happy to talk to you all more. I left my email address. We're seeking local officials to support this petition to try and bring the transportation of coal into compliance, so that would reduce the amount of coal dust coming out into the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could I ask you something?
Absolutely.
What is the suggestion for the transfer? In other words, what would be the difference in how it's done now? Would they be covered? Or would there be, what would be done? What are you proposing?
So the petition does not go so far as to propose a solution beyond seeking that train companies would need a permit for that discharge of coal. So any further solutions are not covered within the petition. At this point, there is arguably an unlawful, unregulated discharge of coal from those trail cars, so they need to get a permit to be brought into compliance to the Clean Water Act.
And you don't know what they have suggested?
No, beyond, you need to get a permit. When you pollute, the permit doesn't investigate a long-term solution, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Freeball Liston.
Freeball Liston. Good evening.
Good evening.
108 days. 108 days of ongoing genocide against Palestinians. Over 25,000 Palestinians killed. Over 10,400 children have been killed. Three college students in Vermont, a six-year-old boy in Illinois, a doctor in Texas, all killed for being of Palestine, Arab, or Muslim descent. Students at Columbia University have been sprayed with skunk by former Israeli soldiers at a pro-Palestine protest. 17-year-old Tofik Abdul-Jabbar, a Palestinian-American, killed by Israeli forces in the West Bank. The idea that this is an issue outside of your scope is neglectful. Will it take a hate incident to happen in Newport News for you to break your silence, or will you be proactive in showing solidarity? There are six ambulances left in Gaza for 2 million people. Israel kills two mothers every hour. 90% of Gaza's population has been displaced. That's 1.8 million people. 55% of Gaza faces famine. One in every four people in Gaza are starving. 110 mosques have been destroyed, including every mosque in northern Gaza. Every hospital in Gaza has been destroyed. Despite hundreds of emails calling for the proposal and support of this council and calling for a ceasefire, you all have deliberately made the choice to stay silent. President Biden is being sued for failure to prevent genocide in Gaza. South Africa is preparing a case against the United States for complicity in war crimes and genocide in Gaza. Complicity is defined as association or participation in a wrongful act. Israel committing genocide is a wrongful act, and the city of Newport News lighting up City Hall in support of Israel indicates association. Therefore, Newport News is complicit. The city is on the wrong side of history. We come out every city council meeting to give you the chance to choose to be on the right side of history, yet all we get is silence from this council. All we get is an empty promise, a prayer for peace. Act on your words and have Newport News written as being on the right side of history. You all have been voted into your positions to represent your constituents' voices, and in regards to Palestinian voices, that doesn't seem to be going too well. Since the city has already chosen to show solidarity with Israel, now staying out of it isn't an option. Now your silence is complicity. It's saying you're unbothered by my people being mercilessly killed. Check your values, choose humanity. You have power, you have influence, you have the chance to be on the right side of history, or go down as being a city that supported war crimes by staying silent. The offer to work with our community to propose a resolution is still on the table. A resolution calling for a ceasefire, an end to the killing and bombing from any and all sides is a stance with humanity and sends a clear nationwide and international message that the people and the government of the city support humanity and stand against killing of civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. Lathanial Kurtz.
Lathanial Kurtz, concerned citizen and local pastor in the southeast community. Good evening. I stand before you today as a concerned resident of Newport News to address a pressing issue that affects our community's health and well-being, the presence of coal dust in our city. Our beautiful city has been a home to generations of families, and it is our collective responsibility to ensure that Newport News continues to be a healthy place for all people. As I've seen throughout my experience as working with the UVA Repair Lab, I've seen so many different citizens come to me and share stories about their families, their kids, and how they are getting tired of power washing their houses, or how they're tired of changing the filters in their homes, or how they're tired of getting car washes for coal dust that's invading their homes. We have talked to people about the sensors that are being placed in our areas, the monitors that are being placed in our homes, and we know that those are good beginnings, but the true thing that we need in our area is that we need a wind fence and a cold dome, something to enclose the coal in the area and/or a wind fence that blocks the water, the wind from blowing it into the lungs of our children. We've seen this for decades, that this has been going on in the area, and it's time for us to do something about that. As a concerned pastor, you probably asked me, why is this a spiritual matter? No, it's a common humanity matter. We all breathe the same air, and this is getting into the lungs of our children, this is getting to the lungs of our elderly, and this is going to affect the respiratory abilities of our citizens and also the asthma rates within our community. Some of you already know that southeast community in Newport News has twice as many asthma rates as the city of Newport News and in the Commonwealth of Virginia. These are the things that we have to fight to combat, amongst other things that we have within our city, and we know those issues that we're listening to as we speak. So we have to figure out a way how to correct these issues and how to fight for our citizens, and we do that by providing sensible regulations on Kinder Morgan and Dominion Terminal. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for being compassionate and caring, council members today.
Thank you. Our next item is new business. Well, Dr. Woodbury wants to do the honors.
I move an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute, and the city clerk to attest on behalf of the city of Newport News, Virginia, an employment agreement for the position of city attorney by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and Robert E. Eliot.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Eliot.
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Congratulations.
Congrats. I'm going to change it up a little bit. Instead of going to Mr. Manager, I'm going to go to Mr. Attorney. I, you know, I don't know how many years you've been here, but I know it's been some decades.
Been a while.
It's been a long time, and I just want to say, just want to say, before you do your spiel, all first-line counsel, just thank you for all that you've done, for your wisdom and your guidance, and wish you the well into retirement. We may come visit you down in Florida, and I'll turn it over to you.
It's going to be 79 down there.
Turn it over to you, Colley.
First, I want to congratulate Bob.
Before you do, I want to know when the party is.
I told him I didn't want one, but anyway.
I want one for you.
I just want to say that it's been a privilege and an honor to be an attorney for the city of Newport News for almost four decades, 39 and a half years, about the last dozen as city attorney. It's a great city. I grew up in Portsmouth, which is a shipyard town, but we have a tax base. It's pretty nice here. I just have worked with some wonderful people in the city attorney's office throughout the city and on city council for a lot of years, and I just leave the job. I almost wish I wasn't going to retire, but it's time. You know, I've been here a long time, and it's time to go. But I really enjoyed it. I want to tell you all how much I enjoyed working for you, how much I enjoyed helping the city for four decades. It's been an honor and a great experience, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to share two updates with everyone that I also shared with the city council during our afternoon work session, and both of them have to do with the ongoing discussion that we have been having in this community around homelessness, and our efforts to engage with others, not only in our community but in the surrounding communities, to look at new approaches, to include regional approaches, to trying to put forward new solutions to solve this problem. So the first is that I'm pleased to announce that the Local Initiative Support Corporation, or LISC, has agreed to fund a regional homelessness study to identify new solutions to address homelessness on the peninsula. So going forward, we will complete a required funding application that LISC has shared with us, and select a contractor to undertake the scope of work. So in the weeks ahead, I would certainly look forward to sharing more about this regional approach, and sharing specifically with residents in Newport News how they could become a part of the study as the work goes forward. And the second announcement, really regarding the same subject, is that we're also finalizing actions with regard to a contractor who will review our operations and services at the Four Oaks Day Service Center. We expect to make a formal announcement about this work very soon. The contractor will address the Department of Human Services' goal of designing and sustaining a homeless response system for persons experiencing a housing crisis, with a concentrated focus on reducing unsheltered homelessness and improving operations at the center. The scope of work identifies the performance objectives of enhanced client engagement. We know that we have an increasing challenge with those in the community that need outreach in order to encourage them to pursue services. So in addition to enhanced client engagement, reduced unsheltered homelessness, and accelerated access to successful housing outcomes. So thank you very much for allowing me to share that information.
City clerk.
Yes, sir. I just want to thank Colley Owen for all of his legal advice, and for your friendship, Colley. I wish you well in your future endeavors, and maybe I'll come down to Florida, visit. And also, we have two birthdays coming up. I want to wish happy birthday to Dr. Woodbury, who will celebrate a birthday on the 27th, and Councilwoman Vick, who will be February 3rd. That's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Eliot.
Thank you, thank you.
I would like to thank Colley for his time served in Newport News, always leading this council in the right direction, making sure the city has the best representation. And I always like to congratulate our new city attorney. I know you do a great job and continue to lead the big footsteps of Colley of making sure our city's going in the right direction. I also like to thank all the speakers who came today. The council definitely heard your voices, it's always good and great when citizens come down and express their concerns, because I'm a firm believer in Newport News, we all on one team, and sometimes we don't know it all, but once citizens come down and express their concerns, it moves the team forward, it moves the train forward. I would like to invite citizens out this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Brooks Crossing, we're going to have a parent and child vision and goal board party. It's going to be free food, we'll provide dinner, and it's an opportunity for parents and children to discuss their goals and visions for this year. So it's going to be fun. We are still in need of newspapers, so if you got any, not newspapers, magazines. If you have any magazines, please drop any magazines off to Brooks Crossing. We definitely can use those. Also, on February 6th, myself, Tina Vick, and the school board, we're hosting a South District Town Hall meeting. We definitely excited about that. We're definitely excited about listening to the citizens and seeing how we could continue to move Newport News forward. So two dates, January 29th, we have Brooks Crossing from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and February 6th, our Town Hall meeting, the South District, will be at the library, Main Street Library. So please come out, please break the word, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harris.
All right, and I too want to say congratulations to you, Mr. Colley, as you go into the next phase, and I thank you for all of your help with some of the questions that I've had when I didn't understand certain things, and you always called me right back or got to me as soon as you could possibly could, and I may sit beside you, because I can always add the cheat code right beside me when I have questions. But like I said, just enjoy yourself, have fun, and looking forward to our new city attorney coming in. Real quick, I just Real quick, I just want to remind everybody, on February the third is the Winter Fest, and during the Winter Fest at the old Kmart site, we are gonna also have our seventh annual school supply, our re-up school supply distribution event. We're still collecting items. We'll be at the Denver Community Center on Thursday and Friday of this week from around six to eight. Some of the big items that we need, or we are still taking donations for are tissues and hand sanitizers. That seems to be a big need in the schools. So, if you still want to make a donation, you can reach out to myself or here at the clerk's office, and we'll get in contact with one of us. And if you would like to come volunteer and help us to continue packing bags, we're gonna be at Denver Community Center from six to eight this Thursday and Friday. And Saturday morning, February the third, at nine-thirty, we'll be distributing everything. We'll be DJs, there's gonna be books on bikes, we're gonna be giving out free books to the young people, we're gonna have hot cocoa, and just gonna have a good time as our students prepare for the second semester of school, which, can you imagine, can you believe, we're already at the second half of the school year coming up? So, we want to make sure they start the second half of the school year off with supplies and just as fresh as they were when they started the school year. And then, I also would like to, if I can pull this up real quick, I have a young person that I would like to acknowledge on tonight, if I can find. His name is Noah Walker. Met this young man a couple of years ago. He's a first grader now, so he's getting up there. He's a student at Saunders Elementary School. And this young man told me he loves playing football, loves playing video games, and just loves to be outside. But I wanted to let Chief Drew know that his career aspirations is to be a police officer. So, hopefully, I can connect him one day with Chief Drew so that he could start getting training for that career field. But I did want to highlight that he's a phenomenal young man doing great things even at an early age. From what I hear and from what people have told me about him, when I asked about him, he does, he's very respectful. And with some of the news that we have received over the last couple of days, it's always good that we can acknowledge the young people that are doing great things, even at a young age, and hopefully, we can help them continue to stay on that track. So, Mr. Noah Walker from Saunders Elementary School. We had to reschedule our Councilman's Corner. I will get a new date for that. It was supposed to have been last night. As soon as we can get that rescheduled, I will get that information out. Being that Mr. Ely has something coming up as well, I'll try to work it around so that people can be able to attend both if possible. So, I'll get that information out as soon as possible, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Long.
I also want to thank Colley for all your help as being a new city council member. I remember I called you up a lot of times, just asking you different questions of how different ideas that I may have, what genites we may be talking about. So, really do appreciate answering the call. I know sometimes I called you early in the morning, six, seven o'clock in the morning, and you would respond back. So, really do appreciate your help and support. So, I wish you well in your retirement and enjoy all the days you have, sunny days ahead of you in Florida. Also, want to congratulate the new city attorney, Bob, and look forward to working with you. And I'll be doing the same thing, calling you up at odd hours, like I did with Colley, so be on the lookout for that. That's all I have.
Councilman Vick.
Yes, Colley, yeah, it will be sad, it's sad seeing you leave. You've been a part of the majority of my city council career, and I do really appreciate the support of you and your team, and we're definitely gonna miss you. But I know you're not gonna miss this weather in Florida. So, continued success to you and your family. And Bob, I'm looking forward to working with you as well as our new city attorney. So, thank you so much. And as Councilman Ely mentioned, I'm really excited about our South District Community Meeting. This is, I think, the first that we've actually partnered with the school board representatives of the South District, our Dr. Terry Bass and Maritza Alge, and we have a full agenda. So, come ready for information. We're gonna give an update on our Huntington Middle School project. There will be information on, because I know so many times we get residents and citizens who are concerned about as our summer comes upon us, what are they gonna do with their children? And so, we will, we have contacted so many agencies, we're gonna have flyers. They won't be able to make presentations, but we're gonna have as much information there as to what our children can do for the summer. Because you know that saying that has been around for years, that if children don't have anything to do, they'll end up getting in trouble. And as we have seen on the news, Troy, I see you back there, Troy Catchmore, he was on the news today, talking in reference about the, trying to work with the youth and that they've been doing with Catchmore Kids to be able to keep the young people out of trouble, and that's what we want to do. Hopefully, through our efforts and our organizations, that we can all work together to help our young people know, and the older ones now, to just put the guns down and keep our community safe. So, I'm really excited about that. And also, I'm working with a gentleman in Hampton. He has an organization, the Hope Foundation, and there will be a youth conference, Our Youth, Our Future, on Saturday, February the seventeenth, at the Hampton Convention Center. And the doors open at nine-thirty, but it's a series of different workshops for our young people. It's free and open to everyone. The doors open at nine-thirty. You can drop your kids off for information from different speakers, as well as, one thing everybody likes to have, free lunch. So, bring them out, bring them out. And you're welcome to stay. If you don't want to just drop them off, you are welcome to stay. And I've got a few more things. Frank James, I always want to congratulate you on the great job you're doing as our public works director, and to be able to have this Adopt This Spot presentation, because not only do we want to have our youth put the guns down, but we want to raise our young people to understand the importance of doing things like that, adopting a spot to keep our city clean, because there's so many things that come with. I know some people think picking up trash may be a menial job, but for people, it helps them to understand about responsibility and accountability and being able to be a part of keeping their community looking nice, because I always say, if your community looks nice, you feel better. And when you feel better, people are gonna do better. So, I'm glad that's continuing and hope that we'll have more people working with our public works department to be able to keep our city beautiful. And lastly, I have to say happy birthday to my cohort on city council. We ran together, we won together, and now we get to celebrate our birthdays together. So, happy birthday, Councilwoman, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And happy birthday to you, Ms. Tina. We're gonna have a nice celebration, and thankfully, hopefully, our new city attorney will keep us out of jail like Colley has done. So, I do appreciate that, Colley. I didn't serve a single day. And I am so grateful for all of you who came down and expressed your concerns, and we take them seriously, and I thank you for that. I appreciate all of the condolences I've received, and I do appreciate all of the prayers and wishes that I have received in the last two weeks. And I do thank you for being involved, and I want to encourage you, because I hope all of these years, I've always said, we need to be having our city council meetings not just in the South, but in the midtown and in the North, so that even if we have to run a bus from down here if you want to come to the meeting, so that everybody can be involved and have a stake and volunteer. Look at some of the boards that are available, if you look on the website, that you can serve and make a contribution. I really do think being involved in that is so important for all of our citizens. So, thank you very much, and I promise not to do any, well, do you have a sign-up list of people coming down to see you? I suggest that. Anyway, good luck to you, Colley, and I know you're gonna be, I would get, I'd get on that list, I really would. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. I would join in sending off Colley properly. You've been the only city attorney I've known, so the bar has already been set. Bob, I look forward to working with you and continuing to make Newport News the best city we can. So, in addition to that, as Councilman Ely stated, as Councilwoman Woodbury has stated, and Tina Vick, we hear you. We thank you all so much for coming down and sharing your concerns with us. I promise it does not fall on deaf ears. And the last thing that I want to share with the community is, it's more so an appreciation for teachers that the CNU men's basketball team is doing. So, the captains are hosting Educator Appreciation Day on Thursday at the Freeman Center. So, all Newport News educators, which includes teachers, administrators, staff, and bus drivers with valid school IDs, will receive two general admission tickets to the game while supplies last. Tickets can be redeemed at the CNU Athletic Ticket Office located in the Freeman Center beginning one hour prior to tip-off. So, there is, we can never do enough to show our teachers how much we appreciate them, but this small token, hopefully, if you know any educators out there, or you might be the family member of one, please go out and enjoy that basketball game of the defending state champs that are here in Newport News. So, that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Manager quickly.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colley, I would be remiss, I've sort of launched in some of my prepared remarks, and personally, I want to thank you for all of the support that you have provided to me, not only in my role as the acting and as now the city manager, but the support that you've provided to our department heads and many of us who have come to depend on the city attorney's office for legal guidance over the years. I think municipal service is a unique calling, and for someone who has been committed to it as long as you have, I think speaks volumes to, first of all, your degree of service and your integrity to the community, but also your commitment to the city of Newport News. So, thank you so much on behalf of the entire city administration for all of your dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Newport News.
I think it's on to me. I will wrap up. So, the first thing is environmental justice. I mentioned the $2 billion that the vice president and president set aside a few months ago. It particularly references community-led air and other pollution monitoring, prevention, and remediation. So, I think the federal intervention, those dollars is the best way that the city of Newport News can get involved. It's, you know, we don't pay for anything, but we're able to get federal grants, and so that has always been the plan. And I think with this, with our newfound access, I think they like Allen at the White House, I think we'll be able to get some money. The second thing, I want to give a shout-out to Adrienne and to Catchmore Kids who were able to go with us last week to the Office of Gun Violence Prevention. I think that was important. I think it's important to get a seat at the table, important to get a seat, especially when there's key decisions being made. And so, I appreciate you driving up along with Tiffany, with Chief, and with Allen, really to have that important meeting. I think we're gonna be able to leverage that new connection, and I think as we look at the summer jobs program, as we look at 24/7 rec centers, and we look at many things that are gonna happen this summer for the first time, I think we all understand that the youth are the most important thing, they're the foundation. Thank you, Catchmore Kids and Adrienne, for coming with us last week. I'm wearing my I Voted sticker. I just wanted to flag to everyone, to all the citizens, that you're now able to vote in the presidential primaries. You can pick one. You can vote in either the Republican or the Democrat primary, either here at City Hall on the sixth floor or in City Center. So, make sure you come out, make sure your voice is heard. And finally, to Colley, the man of the night, my wartime consigliere, right? I think it's, you know, the mayor sits on a lot of different teams. You have city council team, you have federal, you have state. But a team that most people don't talk about is what I call the four horsemen, is the mayor, the city attorney, city clerk, and the city manager. And I appreciate our Zoom calls, and whenever I want to have a very, very short work session, Colley says, well, we have to legally do this. And I think you've given us great, great advice. And to the man who taught me that, you know, it's always great to send an email, phone call's better, but nothing beats an in-person meeting. So, we really do appreciate you, Colley. And to Colley, we'll say fair winds and the following seas. Stand adjourned.